I'll call this special meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to order. Present is Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Ms. Tricia Pitko, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Connolly, and Mr. John Llewellyn. Mr. Mark Patton and Ms. Eileen Lou McCormick may get here later. It depends on a flight from Chicago and a student concert that they're both held up from. If I could ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to our, I think it's fifth in a series of town hall meetings that started when Jessica Gerber, as our Board Secretary, led a small group of us in looking at how we can better communicate to citizens and came up with the concept of a town hall meeting, which really spoke to the issue of you can speak at board meetings, but we don't respond in a dialogue. This is an opportunity for you to ask a question, make a comment, and have some dialogue with the Board. It's a first-come, first-served basis. We do look for you to make your comment and question within three minutes, but there's flexibility there and the moderator will determine just how much you're pushing that three-minute limit. We don't have a big turnout. Sometimes we have, sometimes we haven't, so we probably have a little bit more flexibility tonight. We have normally thought of going seven to nine, depending on whether there's interest, and then checking at nine o'clock to see if there's any, like, final one or two people and then call it a night. We do ask a moderator to help us with this. In this instance, Tom Flynn, the Chairman of the Board of Finance, has graciously agreed to serve as the moderator. That allows me, as Chair of the Board, to react as a member of the Board and not chairing the meeting, but this is an official meeting of the Board of Education, so, yes, I am Chair of the Board for that purposes. And so, we look forward to your conversation. All topics that you see on the agenda are available for conversation. You know from those of you who have come to the past meetings that it's virtually anything to do with the school district, except for personnel. This is not the meeting to talk about staff, indoor board members, central office staff or school staff, so you can raise topics related to the financing, programs, the facilities, and the policies related to those, as long as you do so in a respectful manner. We've also asked our Board members to be as concise as possible in their responses so that we get to as many people as possible. With that having been said, Mr. Flynn, thank you very much for being moderator, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the Board of Education for asking me to do this. It's an honor. And also, I want to personally thank you for all the hard work and effort that all of you put in. I know from personal experience, it's a thankless job, and you guys deal with a lot more emotional issues than we do on our Board, so I want to personally thank you for all your time and effort. When I told my son, my 10-year-old, that I was coming here tonight to be the moderator, he asked me what my goal was or what I was trying to do, and I told him I was trying to talk as little as possible at this public meeting, which he basically said, "Dad, you're not going to be too good at that."[243.31][243.31](Laughter) So, I'm going to ask for your help. The way that I don't need to speak too much is if we're all cordial and polite to one another. And as I say, when we do the Board of Finance Public Forum during the budget season, everybody's watching, including the children, so let's set a good example to them, for them, and to treat each other with respect. No personal comments, no personal directives, and let's listen to what each other has to say and have a dialogue here. Each Board Member will be given the opportunity to go first to your comments and questions, and then any Board Member that wants to follow up on what you have to say will be allowed to do so. As the Chairman indicated, there'll be three minutes, and within that three minutes, there'll be opportunity for a follow-up question. We would like the follow-up question to be on the topic, but if it's a short first question, we might have a second question that is allowed. I'm going to ask that we try not to be redundant, and we try to cover a lot of ground here. So, if your question has been asked and answered, let's move on to a different topic or question, or if it hasn't been answered, bring it back around and ask for a clarification or what you would like. There is a sign-up sheet up here. We would ask that you give your name as well as your address. We also note that the Superintendent is in attendance tonight. Thank you for being here. However, she's not here to actually address the questions or comments. Those should be directed to your public officials, your Board Members. Are there any questions or comments before we start moving this along? Seeing none, whoever would like to come up and go first, please come on up and welcome. Okay, now that I scared everybody, this could be a relatively quick meeting. Come on.
So, Mary Hoag, who hasn't been attending Board of Ed meetings. So, I guess for the benefit of me and the TV audience and everyone else, there's been a lot of concern about the state budget and how it's affecting our education budget particularly, and I know there's been an update on that, and I just was wondering if you could sort of get us to speed on currently where we are and sort of maybe a future look. I don't know how far out, five year, two next year, you know, how are we positioning ourselves to be able to prepare for what looks like a long-term financial issue for funding our education system?
Thank you, Ms. Hoag. Can I ask you to sign in the sign-in sheet? I'm going to turn the first question over first to Ms. Carnell, and then other Board Members can follow up.
Sorry, I have a slight cold, so...
I hope you feel better.
Thank you. You're leaving?[448.69][448.69](Laughter)
See, I haven't been here for very long.
All right, now you don't get an answer. So, I want to start with the latter part of the question, and I say this half joking, half seriously. I wish we knew what was going to happen in three to five years. That's, you know, I know that the town does the best they can to try to keep the expenses as, you know, as low as they can, but we never want to take away from the education and all the other things that the town has to offer. So, that would be a very difficult question. In terms of the more immediate, I think it's still going back and forth. There was an article, I think I saw yesterday, that, you know, Dan Malloy commented. So, I don't know. I mean, unless anybody else has an up-to-date, I can't tell you what's the latest has been.
I'll comment if you will. The $4.3 million that we thought originally were going to have to be cut because the legislature sent a very clear signal that the pension transfer was kind of like off the table. They didn't see that as a viable solution. We are now down to $2.3 million because the first selectman had assigned $2 million of the $9 million. The town was going to absorb $7 million, but $2 million was going to come to the Board of Ed. That $2 million is not there, so we're down to $2.3 million. In my mind, the bad thing is that $4.3 was so shocking that now $2.3 says, "Oh, that's not so bad." And in fact, $2.3 is still going to be a very big struggle in a tight budget. I do want to compliment the State Senator and the three state reps who have done as good a job as they can to keep us informed of where the conversations are. Actually, the Appropriations Committee is meeting tonight. Oh, okay, then Jessica can give an update on that, to get that first cut of their version of the budget. And so, my guess is that the RTM will vote a budget without knowing the final results of the state budget, and that's just the gamble we have to play. There is no doubt that this same scene is going to repeat itself next year and the following year, and I think that's what gave rise to some people in the community asking about, I'll say, structural changes. And so, while that's a conversation that needs to take place, 10,000 students require teachers in front of classrooms, require custodians to take care of buildings, secretaries to process information, and so you can't structurally change a classroom from not existing. And so, it's not going to be an easy discussion. It's just going to be one that we have to look at every year.
Ms. Carnell, did you have anything else you wanted to add to your answer?
No, I just, what I was saying, and that's why I was curious, I thought that Dan Malloy, you know, opened his mouth again, and it was still a possibility. That's why I was asking. So, your news is better than mine.
I will say, for those of you who do not know, I'm going to say the Connecticut Mirror, as a newspaper, probably does the best job of keeping track of what's happening in Hartford and writing very cogent articles that explain the details. So, if you really want to say, "Well, what's happening up in Hartford?", check online with the Connecticut Mirror because you'll get the best update from them.
Ms. Gerber.
Well, speaking of the Connecticut Mirror, I just looked it up, and this isn't actually really great news. The headline is "Connecticut Budget Process Collapses Amid Dissension." This was from earlier this afternoon, just about two hours ago. "The General Assembly's Appropriations Committee failed to adopt a $41 billion budget proposal Tuesday afternoon as Democrats were unable to hold together a paper-thin majority on the panel. So, their leaders of both parties blamed each other for the committee's failure to act. Two days before the Thursday deadline, everyone also acknowledged there is a chance the Tax, Writing, Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee might not finish its work before the allotted time runs out on Friday." So, I'm sorry, I wish I had better news to report, but that's the latest from the Connecticut Mirror, so, in terms of the big picture.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to address this question? Mrs. Connolly.
Just one quick point, in terms of how we handle this in the future, and Mr. Dwyer referenced the idea of structural changes, which is a large-scale conversation that we're not ready to have for this budget cycle, but obviously, one thing we need to look to are things that will be long-term savings that will repeat. And the best example I can give of something like that is, for example, what we're looking at with these solar carports. That something like that is something where we're not hitting programs, we're not hitting facilities, and it's something that is going to help us smaller this coming year than in subsequent years, and then continue to provide savings in years to come. And, you know, and obviously, that does not take down $2.3 million, but as much as possible to find ways that if that goes, that we find another way to address it is obviously ideally what we'd like to do as much as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Carnell. Are there other Board Members that want to opine on this specific topic or question? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Hoag. Next Member of the public, please come on up.
If nobody comes forward, we're going to just pick people randomly.
We'll ask them questions.
Yeah.
My name is Heather DeGregorio. I've got two kids over at Sherman, and one in preschool due to, had to kindergarten next year. In looking at the hard budget cuts that we're going to have to make and looking at how the Tier One and the Tier Two and the Tier Three, I saw that, you know, consolidating bus schedules was kind of on the table for the public schools, but I was also wondering if we'd looked at consolidating bus schedules for the buses we provide to the private schools. I understand that that's a state mandate, and we have to provide those buses, but I feel like some of those buses are horribly underutilized. My soon-to-be kindergartner currently goes to preschool at one of the private schools, and I consistently see three big buses pull up every morning. One kid get off sometimes, two, maybe five or six at the most. That seems like a really expensive way to get 10 kids to school, and I'm wondering if this is happening at the other private schools as well, and if we can maybe consolidate those buses down to from three to two or four to three. It's kind of, and it's my understanding that the buses cost about $40,000 per year to run one bus to the school. Am I correct on that?
Listen up. Okay, we're going to go to Ms. Gerber with this question.
This is a topic that's come up. You know, Mr. Fickie, who's the head of transportation, I know, really has to struggle a great deal because there are issues with the private school buses, and it's acknowledged. You know, yes, by law, we do need to provide the buses for the private schools, and the problem is when you have a private school, you're talking about students all over our very large geographically spread-out town, and they really don't want to have students on a bus for 90 minutes a day each day, which could certainly happen if you have somebody up in Greenfield Hill and somebody down at the beach, and somebody over in Stratfield, and you're trying to work it all in. So, I do know that's something that he struggled with. I remember he recalled, he mentioned once specifically about the Fairfield Prep bus and working with Prep to try to help adjust that, and you do have the problem, too, is that sometimes students take it, you know, in the morning but not in the afternoon because they have after-school activities. So, it's a really complex thing, and I know it's something that, you know, that Mr. Fickie is very aware of and tries to work on, but the problem is when you have students in such a wide net, it's really hard to bring it down. But I do know it's something that we are always bringing up, and I have faith that he is looking into that, and I know I've spoken to Dr. Jones as well, you know, and just mentioned, you know, transportation is one of those things that would be so great if we could try to find any savings in any way, both in public and private transportation, to try to get those costs down that can save us on the other side. And, you know, she is aware of it, and I know that she's spoken to him, and, you know, trying to find whatever ways we can to do it, but sometimes you really are up against, you know, a rock between a rock and a hard place when you have the students in so many different parts of town. And, you know, for the elementary private schools, we're talking about fairly young children, and, you know, it's a lot to ask them to be on a bus for, you know, three hours a day. But transportation is aware of it, the Board is aware of it, the Superintendent's aware of it. How much we can whittle it down, I can't say definitively, but it's something that certainly is on people's radar. So, I know that's not probably the answer you want to hear, but it's something that we're all aware of. How much we can get it down, I can't say definitively.
Are there other Board Members that would like to opine? We'll go to Mrs. Connolly.
Just a couple of the things, just to add to Mrs. Gerber's comments. I mean, we've done things, like mentioned to the Superintendent we had as part of a Board discussion, what if we started changing, you know, elementary school start times, for example? You know, Hall and Hill has a different, they have an earlier start time. If something like that were adjusted, would we be able to make more Tier Three buses, which means a bus is able to do three schools, you know, as opposed to just one? So, we've mentioned that. We have talked for years about trying to find a way to do more public outreach regarding getting parents to opt out. I mean, there are parents who know that they're going to be driving their child to school even though they're on a bus route, and that they're not taking advantage of the bus, and they know they won't. And is it, now, and I completely respect the notion that any parent, it's their right to have that bus seat, that they never know at some point, you know, someday they may not be able to, and they want to have that bus stop there, and if they've opted out, that option is now off the table. But that's something we always bring up. Is there a way to encourage more parents if, you know, this really isn't going to be something for you, if your child will have a car, obviously, at the high school, you know? So, that's something, you know, so, start time, opting out. I do believe in this budget, I can't remember the dollar figure associated with it, but there is a commitment to dropping one bus. I don't know if my fellow Board Members can remember that more specifically, so I know that they somehow, to address this $2.3 million, we are going to be figuring, well, not we, Mr. Fickie and his staff, will be figuring out a way to do that. And I believe also that they have new software. Isn't that correct for the transportation? So, there's going to take a whole new look at the entire bus route system of are there a way, exactly to your point, that greater efficiencies can be worked in there? You know, that's sort of on the same topic as that idea of the solar. Are there inefficiencies that we can improve and save money in a way that will then be repeated for every year after that? But ultimately, at the end, I mean, we come at that topic every year, and every year we always feel like there's a missed opportunity here and just hoping to capitalize on it more.
Thank you. Anybody else? We've got a Ms. Gerber back to you.
Just to follow up, in the budget listing, it does have the one-bus reduction, actually at $72,000. To have one kid on a bus for $72,000 a year. Right. Now, granted, that bus probably is part of a tier, so it probably is going to another school, so it's not as if there's one child on that one bus the entire day. I mean, it probably is, you know, going to a middle school or a high school or an elementary school, depending on which private school it goes to. So, it's not that sole use, but it might only be a two-tier as opposed to a three-tier, so.
We'll go to Mr. Dwyer.
Yeah. One of the issues we're facing is a cultural change. For all of you who have been at an elementary school or a middle school and watched the number of parents who drive their kids up to school, and we are required by law to provide them transportation, and parents in the main have not wanted to voluntarily not accept that transportation because they want the coverage in the event that they can't take their kid to school. And so, the increasing number of parents who drive their kids to school means those are kids who are not on the buses, but we are required to provide buses for them. One of the thoughts that I have shared, and it has not been, I think, widely accepted, is that right now, most of our walkers walk to elementary school. And I've said, "Well, what about if we had every kid have to walk to their elementary school within a mile and a half or whatever it is, and from there, they get picked up from middle school or high school?" Would that increase the number of walkers, decrease the number of buses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? That is probably pretty much of a nightmare to figure out, and whether it would or would not save money, but anything that gets kids walking more is a good thing for them. And so, there have been individual Board discussions and ideas thrown out to try and solve this almost unsolvable problem of a $7 million budget for transportation. It's a big number out of the $165 million that we spend, but a solution has not yet been found.
Any other Board Members? Mr. Llewellyn.
Just one quick comment. I don't think that the problem is isolated only to the private schools.
Yes, no.
I think that it is more of a universal problem, especially, I've heard at the high school as well. So, there is a big opportunity, so hopefully the software...
John, they can't hear you.
Well, it's...
Is there a volume?
There we go. Nope.
Okay.
The gain's got to be put up behind it, over there. So, it's not just that. So, there is a great savings here if we can figure out how.
Thank you. Any other questions? Or do you have a follow-up?
No, the answer to my question. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
My name is Guy Gleistim. I'm on 165 Stonewall Lane. I have a, first, a suggestion, then a question. The suggestion on is, if you have an opportunity to explore choice around transportation, try opt-in, not opt-out. I don't know if that would comply with the legal requirements, but just from a planning point of view, if you start from the position that we will not provide transportation unless you explicitly opt-in, will actually get you to the goal, whereas opt-out, there's no particular reason for people to do that, and they get to reserve the right without doing any work. So, I don't know if that gets by compliance, but opt-in rather than opt-out has more meat behind it, I think. My question is really about the process and benchmarking that you go through as it relates to how you generate ideas around cost savings if you've got a $2 million-plus budget gap. There are both other states that have faced huge pension-related deficits, and I'm sure school communities around the nation, and I'm just wondering what process you go through beyond community outreach to surface potential solutions, be they very narrow, like, how do you know what software to use, to what have other communities done when they face this kind of shortfall?
We'll go to Mr. Dwyer first with this question.
Your first comment is a short but unsatisfactory answer. State law does not allow us to not provide transportation. We are required by state law to provide a safe mode of transportation for each child to school, so we can't ask them to opt-in because it is required that we provide transportation.
Thank you.
Our normal process is that we ask our staff to generate ideas as to what administrative costs and, if necessary, what program costs should we look at when we have to solve a budget gap problem. This particular year, we've extended that to the various union groups to say, "Do you have ideas?", rather than just the central office, as to where we could save money so that would have the least impact on students. Those ideas are collected from various staff and Board Members, and then are reviewed at the Board Table. I think we've met twice. You may be familiar with this concept of Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three list of ideas to get a sense of where the Board might be willing to go and where it would not. We normally, this year's an exception, would wait until May to know exactly what the budget gap is and then deal with it. Because of the size of the gap this year, we started talking March, yeah, in March, and we normally will make a decision in May. We've extended that to June 13th so that we might get at least as much information from the state as possible before we have to make a decision. This Board does not like to make cuts to program, so we generally look to other means. But this Board is also cognizant of the fact that if we start a deferred maintenance program here, eventually, that's going to cost this town more if we don't take care of the buildings, and it will have an impact on the educational environment that our children are in. So, it's a delicate balance, I think, in terms of looking at that. We had made a comment about structural changes. There are some people in the community who talk about, "Well, is it time to talk about not having 11 elementary schools?" I say it that way because using the other word sends shivers down people's back. Is it time to talk about grade reconfiguration? Time to talk about class size? Those are all topics that, for the most part, this Board has felt would impact the quality of education in this town, the neighborhood basis of our elementary school system, and we have wanted to try and find every means possible before we go down that path. So, it starts with staff. It involves Board Members, back-and-forth discussions, and then a decision. Our staff do keep track of what other districts are doing to see if there is an idea out there that is helpful. And sometimes districts in Connecticut look at us and say, "Look, Fairfield joined Partnership 2.0. It saved them $3.5 million of insurance. If they can do it, we can do it." We were the first ones in that area. Other districts have followed us. So, I think the districts in Connecticut try to learn from one another as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. We'll go to Mrs. Pitko.
This is actually my second full budget cycle on the Board, and during the budget season, when we were going through and vetting the budget, Dr. Jones and her staff presented a very lean budget. I'm not going to reiterate everything he, Mr. Dwyer, said. I first saw the tiers, Tier One, Two, Two, Three, and I think I was quoted as saying it was heart palpitations, because I understand what taking any of that away means and what it does to the students, being an educator, being a taxpayer, being a parent. So, I take it very seriously. When you're looking at it, I can't even begin right now to understand where we would find $2.4 million and how that would tremendously affect our students. I really hope I don't have that reality come May, but we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Anyone else like to take a shot at this question?
Let me just, we argue in town from time to time. The Board of Education argues with the first selectman and the Board of Selectmen. We argue with the Board of Finance. We argue with the RTM because all of us want the best possible public education system for the town of Fairfield. But each Board has a different responsibility, and at the end of the day, the RTM has to make a judgment, a decision, as to how much to allocate to this service and that service. Because you listen to us argue doesn't mean that we're not all trying to get to the same goal, and I don't say that because Mr. Flynn is here and Chairman of the Board of Finance. I say it because I can honestly say, in the time I've been on the Board, each Board has helped the Board of Education when we've needed it, and we have helped the town financially when they have needed it. We do recognize, although we may argue with one another from time to time, that we are one town, and we try to make a decision as a group, not one pitted against the other.
Do you have any follow-ups, sir?
Just a technical question for my edification. Just a technical question for my edification. Since we'll be passing a budget prior to the state finalizing theirs, does Malloy actually have the wherewithal to impose greater than a $2.4 million burden on the town? Or does that necessarily go through the legislative process?
The governor does have an opportunity to put a spending freeze on certain line items. Whether that would impact education or not, I can't tell you directly. But he has some limited ability to tighten the budget. In my former profession, we would get letters that says, "The grant that we've given you is cut by 5% because of good and just reasons." So, he has limited ability before going back to the legislature, once we get our allocation. But at the same time, 165 million prior to this recent cut, maybe $7 million comes from the state. So, while it is a big number, it's not like half of our budget. So, whatever impact they do have is a portion of that $7 million.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have somebody else who'd like to ask a question from the public?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sign in here, Pierce.
My name is Frank Sahagian, 20 Chelsea Street, Fairfield. I'm also an eighth-grade social studies teacher over at Fairfield Woods. And, you know, unless, I've read the minutes. I would like to follow up right after your last comments, Mr. Dwyer, about the word that you don't want to use. And I've read the minutes of many of the last meetings, and unless I've missed something, I would like to really have us spend some time and hear some comments more about aligning with comments that Mr. Flynn has made at previous meetings and Mr. Convertito has made also about structural changes that do need to be made. And, you know, the elephant in the room really is declining enrollment. It really is. I mean, that is the elephant in the room. And, you know, we spend a lot of time in this town, and you've heard me, I think, even at the meeting, talk about the McKinley issue, and there's so much press, there's been so much press about the racial imbalance at McKinley. And as I said at that meeting, and I'll say it again now, I mean, I think it's time to stand up to the state and say, "I don't understand why we are so compliant, or needing to be so compliant to the state when, look what they've done to us." And as I come back to the declining enrollment number, I mean, the elephant in the room is, we're going to have to, I mean, I think it would be unrealistic to think that we can support 11 elementary schools. The numbers just don't support it. I mean, we have a couple of schools that are now going to be under 300 students. I haven't heard much conversation about how we're going to address that issue. Redistricting clearly would, and I'll use the word, redistricting clearly will solve and easily solve a racial imbalance problem. You know, if you look at the lines, the way the lines are drawn now, and you talk about gerrymandering, I mean, it's as bad as the state of Connecticut in terms of the way the lines are drawn. It's a relatively easy thing to fix, and your comment about neighborhood schools, that still can be maintained. I mean, where the schools are located, there's no problem in still maintaining neighborhood schools. And what also is clear as day is that the problems that this is going to present to the middle schools, and not this year, obviously, because this, you know, we've dodged the bullet this year, as we all know. The sixth-grade numbers are very large. Next year, and the years after that, they go down dramatically. You're going to be faced with, the next few years, the next year's budget with a sixth-grade class coming in, which cannot support full teams. That's a situation that, if you look at the numbers, will be continuing, not just a one-year event. Sometimes that happens, and you can get by with one year. But other times, it becomes a continuing thing, and that's a horrible thing for students in middle school, to having teams split. So, I would like to hear a little bit more about what we are going to do structurally to look at massive, and I would say they're massive. The declining enrollment numbers in the elementary levels are significant. I mean, we're looking at a 20% reduction in five years from where we are currently.
Thank you.
Elementary schools, so.
All right. We're going to go to Mrs. Pitcau.
We actually have discussed this quite a bit. I've been on for about a year and a half now, almost. When I first got on, there was a committee, a subcommittee, to look at redistricting and to look at guidelines we were going to meet in our racial imbalance plan. We talk about it. The reality is that Holland Hill is being remodeled. And being one of the elementary schools that has a very large population, it just doesn't seem feasible to redistrict before it's remodeled. And I think structurally, the town is changing. I try to go to a lot of TPZ meetings. I mean, even where I live, there's plots of land where they're building more houses. And not just houses, apartment condominiums. So, while I completely understand what you're saying, I don't think at this time, right now, we should be redistricting. I'm not saying a year from now or two years from now. I'm not sure that isn't something that we won't look. I think it's inevitable. But right now, I don't think that it's plausible for the town while we're still remodeling Holland Hill.
Thank you, Mrs. Pitcau. Do we have other board members that want to comment?
I do think that redistricting needs to be discussed because it is the economic way to balance some of our problems out. I've noted many a time that we have a declining population. I'm still perplexed by why the board thinks that schools should be expanded to the 504s in a declining enrollment. And it does not make any intuitive sense that we need to wait until the completion of the expansion of Mill Hill to then talk about redistricting. The racial imbalance plan could be adjusted through a redistricting, and people don't want to talk about it. But, you know, the prior topic of busing. I mean, we bus kids back and forth across town. We've got really long bus routes. Not sure why it's set up the way it is. But no, I do think that, you know, that is one of the structural changes that needs to occur. And it really does perplex me why people think we should be expanding, especially after the Holland Hill, when we've got, you know, hundreds of empty seats at elementary. We could shift several buses and solve the issue at McKinley. And I know that's not popular, but it is something that, you know, hasn't been openly evaluated. So, that's kind of my view on that.
Any other board members like to opine on this topic at this point? Ms. Cannelly.
It will come as no surprise that I respectfully disagree with several of Mr. Lawell's points. This board has talked about this topic openly, repeatedly, for a few years. All of our discussions on this are public, not in the past few. You're correct, if you're looking at the most recent minutes. And I think, I have never heard of a board member who says, "Absolutely no, no structural changes." I mean, obviously, the cost savings that can come, which will then perpetuate for subsequent years, you close an elementary school, you've just saved on those costs of administration of, you know, the other support staff, custodial staff, et cetera, probably paring down some of the staff members who then would go to the other elementary schools. So, the savings are not insignificant there. But what this board has said repeatedly, having hired an extremely highly respected consulting firm, at the state level, highly respected, to do a thorough examination of how could, you know, what would be the best way to go about redistricting timeline, et cetera? And with all of the aspects that we were looking to achieve through this redistricting plan, the advice was certainly to wait for Holland Hill. They recommended, you know, they didn't see aspects of this being feasible till Mill Hill. I don't know that the board is completely in agreement that this discussion has to wait for Mill Hill. I would agree with that point. But certainly, Holland Hill, being in the midst of it right now, while I am the first one, I have no problem saying that with redistricting, it's hardest on the parents, not the kids, and the parents have to, ultimately, should it happen, have to get over that. The kids will be fine. We've got great schools, and there are great options out there. But the structural change of closing a school, we're not in a position to do right now. To speak almost capriciously of, "We can just ship a couple buses here or there, and, you know, it's fixed," is simply not true. When you have what-if on that bus, I mean, when you actually get into the minutia, and you know this from balance, you know, the sense of class sizes, you know, you've talked about, you've spoken about the teams at the middle schools. Well, if you have, if the bus you happen to move into that school, that's not a bus of 40 children. They're in there by certain grades. Maybe they have a predominance of fifth graders. Maybe there's a lot of kindergartners on that bus. I'm overly simplifying, but you know what I'm saying. And all of a sudden, that's doing things to the number of classes in that elementary school, which, this is not just take 40 kids, and we have 40 chairs here, line them up, put the kids into the seats, and we've just solved balancing. It is much more complicated than that. And to ever speak about this as an issue that's easily solved, dig into it a little bit more, I can spend more time with anyone who's interested, it is more complicated than that. Some of the other points, you know, I don't disagree with the point about gerrymandering, that we have some interesting-shaped districts, and they can, that can absolutely be adjusted, maintaining neighborhood schools. But that's certainly a significant reason why Holland Hill is 504, is that coming from the philosophy of build the school where the children are. The children are in Holland Hill. The thought of saying, "Well, we can just ship some of them over to Riverfield. They have a few seats." Ship some of them up to Burr. Ship some of them over to Dwyer. This could be a little five-year-old, and you're putting them on a bus for a 45, that just doesn't make sense to me. Build it there. I do think, I would agree with Mrs. Pitcau. I do think that very likely that there is a redistricting in our future. And I think we're adults here. That's an adult decision, and it has to be made. I couldn't agree with you more. This isn't something to shy away from because we don't like the topic. Obviously, it's easier when it involves a massive, you know, work like at Fairfield Woods, then the logic of it is irrefutable. But I think it's, many members of the town, and people pay attention, are realizing we're reaching a point, very shortly, where it's equally as irrefutable now. Our numbers are beginning to go down. It's not always in way that immediately makes you see, you know, see, we have this many fewer class sizes, therefore, this many more empty rooms. I know Mrs. Gerber was looking up numbers. I don't know if that was what you were going to speak to next. But I know the numbers even this year have fluctuated more than we expected in terms of actually increasing in certain places. So, it's, but again, I acknowledge your fundamental premise, that the numbers are going down. We're going to have to address it. It cannot be as part of this budget cycle. We're not prepared to do that thoughtfully. Is it a conversation? We have been having it. You know, I think maybe we need to prepare people that it could be sooner than they expect. So, agreeing with all those points. I've already done a few other things. You know, and also to follow up on Mrs. Pitcau's point, you know, we have something, for example, there's a sizable construction being proposed right now for Thorpe Street, which could have, I can't remember the number, anywhere from 50 to 70 new two-to-three-bedroom units in those. That's children that will be moving in there. And those are some of our uncertainties. And we also still have portables, as, just as a reminder that when we talk about classrooms. So, we definitely don't quite have the schools where the kids are. We're trying to fix that with Holland Hill. And then, for a long answer, I'm agreeing with your points, and I do think the board is eventually going to move in that direction.
Do we have someone else? Anybody else that wants to say anything? Sure, Mr. Law.
It is not. It is a complicated thing to look at, but what I haven't seen is an active discussion. What I haven't seen is an analysis of how would we shift or could we shift? What are the demographics of those, you know, five buses that go to a particular school? And if we were to decide that we wanted to shift them, is it feasible or not? It's very easy to say it's all very complex and not do the analysis. But until the analysis is done and presented, we just don't know. But we, you know, we are willing to, it appears, you know, taking more kids from out of town at a cost to this district. We can debate, and we have debated, what that cost is, but it's certainly non-zero.
Thank you. Could have Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I mean, I think we have had some analysis. We did hire Malone and McBroom, and they gave us a very detailed study that came up with a lot of different potential redistricting scenarios. And one of the things they said is that we could not meaningfully, I mean, they did give some redistricting plans that we could do without adding on to Holland Hill, without adding on to Mill Hill. And they were pocket redistricting, small areas, small groups. And especially when you're talking about redistricting students from McKinley, when the population in that district is the most erratic in terms of where the students live, you could plan for one year, and it could end up being completely different for the next year. So, I mean, it's not as if we haven't had professional redistricting experts give us a very detailed plan, which we have been looking at and working through, and not to say that the numbers can't change. But to me, the most important thing is to make sure that Holland Hill, which is in a centrally-located neighborhood, whose enrollment has been going up, that has been bucking the trends, and they have five portables there, to not deal with that issue right now and to instead say we could redistrict, I don't think that would really be doing a great service to any of the students in our town, particularly the students in Holland Hill and in McKinley and in other area schools. So, that would be my concern. And, you know, I mean, obviously, the fact that we got a consultant to do the redistricting study, that we've discussed it, that it is part of our, you know, racial imbalance plan as something out further. But if the experts told us, "You should not redistrict right now until at least Holland Hill is taken care of," to do it in a meaningful way that will actually move the needle. And I also will say, I do agree with you, the whole idea of telling the state, you know, maybe you should not be doing this. I will say that, you know, we did have our state delegates reach out to the Chairman of the State Board of Education and the Education Commissioner. They did come to McKinley. They did do a tour of the school. I think they have a better sense now of what McKinley is and what it means to the students and the families in that community and to our town. So, that could hopefully maybe get people to, you know, back off a little bit. So, that's one hope that I have moving forward.
Do you have any follow-up?
Yeah. My only comment would be, I totally understand this, and I totally get it. It's a hard decision. This is not an easy topic to draw any conclusions. And my only, my major point was, we dodged, we just, we had to rightfully get through this budget process and what happened most recently. So, the priorities have been right. Now that that, we've gotten through that, it is really time to now really focus on, and it's complicated, just as you can see how you guys just don't, and I understand that. I mean, I totally can appreciate there are different, you know, we are, you know, we are relying on the consultants. I get that right now. I just would like to make sure that we get that right to the top, back to the top of the list, because it's going to be coming upon us sooner rather than later. And my only other comment would be, you know, I personally think it's going to be inevitable. I think it's inevitable in the short, you know, I've lived in this town a long time. I've been through it three times. It's going to happen. It hasn't been a while. It's going to happen. So, let's be, you know, that's the elephant in the room. It's going to happen. When we do, and when we do, let's just not fall into the same traps that we fell in last time when we did this, with perpetuating a myth that we have two high schools that are different, because we had parameters last time that were frankly embarrassing when you look at them, because it got us into the situation that we're in right now. Why, the reason why we bus kids from Tomlinson, excuse me, from Stratfield School to Tomlinson? Because why? Because we wouldn't touch where the elementary schools go to the high school. That is totally, that is totally supporting the myth and perpetuating the myth that we have, which you've heard realtors come up before this board to say, "People move here for the high schools." That's the myth, and I hope when we get to that point, and obviously, this is premature now, but we throw that myth out the window, because what elementary school you go to should not determine what high school you go to. I clearly get it. What middle school you do, because those are the kids that are together at that time. You know, I mean, I get the three and the two, you know, you don't want to have, you know, one school go to one high school. But the elementary school that drives the high school is totally a perpetuation of the myth that Ludlow is a better high school than Ward, which is ridiculous. So, I hope when we get to that point, we throw that premise out the window.
Thank you. Do we have any, do any board members want to comment on that, just because it was a bit more in the discussion?
Just briefly, I just appreciate that final comment enormously.
I'd like to say that as well. One of our guidelines is that an elementary school should stay together, that kids are better served if they can stay together and matriculate to the middle school into the high school. The idea that that makes sense for middle school, but don't hold to that guideline for elementary school is an interesting comment, I think worthy of this board to give it thought when we address that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the public? Anyone? Welcome.
Hello. We announce and sign?
Yes, please.
Okay, sorry.
We're a bit redundant on that score, I must say.
And the name you write down and the name you say should be the same.
Well, you were reading my mind, Mr. Dwyer.
That's for ID.
The name, as it appears, is... The name, as it appears, is Suzanne Mesko, 123 Rygate Road. I was going to go in a different direction, but I think I can tie two things together. In a thought process of the last speaker's discussion, I might suggest that maybe what's missing from the Board of Ed is a strategic plan, which is something we had. And I know that Dr. Tittle decided to go down a district improvement plan, but as the first selectman and the board of selectmen is launching into a strategic plan for the town, it might benefit the board to kind of look at something along that line as it pertains to structures and some of the topics that you all might be dealing with as you go forward. But the issue that I have today is about policy and procedure. And my concern is, we have had an instance, and then we had another instance, where the policy used to be on the Board of Ed, that if it was an item on the agenda for discussion, it was discussed and at the next agenda, it would be voted on. We watched that happen once with an item brought forth regarding Ed specs and the concern that the Board of Finance was unclear with the Holland Hill Ed specs. And there was an item that had to be put behind it and we had to meet a Board of Finance requirement. And so therefore, we, we pushed it forward and that became a voting item that evening. That voting item then led to Ed specs looking a lot different than just putting something behind it. And then that led to eventually a hundred and twenty thousand dollar kindergarten playground. This happened again this last meeting where an item was on the agenda. And while I appreciate that this teacher wanted to get going with what she wanted to do, it was just a discussion point. And my concern is, we can't keep doing this because, and the last, the first time this happened, it was that, you know, the board kind of talked about it and decided maybe, you know, not a lot of comment would come of that. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair to the public. And so I think the public, if it's expecting that it's on the item for discussion and the next time would be a voting item, that has to be maintained. And so I don't know how we do it, but I would respectfully ask that this board start looking along those lines. So my question is, how, how do we get it so that we go back to where it's a discussion item and then a voting item?
Okay, we're going to Mrs. Cannelli.
Obviously, I don't set the agenda, so I can't exactly address it, but I'm up, so I'll take it. I, that's certainly something that the board has talked about. I think that in general, it is what we strive for. And of course, as with almost any rules, there's often times where you can make the argument, there's a worthwhile exception. And yet I hear your point of that the, the public should have a certain expectation. And I don't have a easy answer for you, because in most instances where it has come before us and we have taken immediate action, and again, easy for me to say, I'm getting the board packets, I'm part of the discussion, it's not taking me by surprise. I completely respect that point of view. On the other hand, if it's something such as the accepting of the final, and I can't remember the right word for it, the final report of a building committee, that's a, it's, it's easy for me to, I guess I'm imposing my judgment on that by saying, I don't see that as being a controversy. The project is done, we are accepting it as done. It's not a need for a discussion and all you volunteers, please come back to the next meeting so that we can vote on it again. And I say that even as I completely respect your point, that allowing the public to have that expectation and that it shouldn't be done capriciously, and I don't believe we have. That's not to say that there haven't, I'm sure there are exceptions where if we look back and say, well, all right, maybe we should have slowed down on that. So I don't, I don't have a good answer for you. It's, I respect your point of view. I absolutely think it not only is something we should be striving for, but in general do adhere to. I have not personally taken issue with most of our exceptions to that. And where we have made an exception and it has proven to be a mistake, I can only hope that we as a board learn from that of, okay, that was about, that was an improper judgment. We would have been better served by having the discussion and then the vote. I think I just did a lot of talking and didn't really address your point very satisfactorily. I just, I respect the point. I think we strive for that. I haven't had a big problem with the few times we've made exceptions, but I'm sure that there are times where that's not true.
Would anyone else like to address that topic at this point?
Because I do set the agenda.
Right.
I don't believe we have done that very often. Generally, we have done it on, I'll say administrative matters. We certainly have not done it on an issue such as the racial imbalance plan or curriculum or building projects, significant issues. We do, the board, I think, does reserve some flexibility. The most recent one was the Riverfield project. The building's been open for three years, four? It takes a while to close out a project. So when they said, as a building committee, we're ready to close it out, we didn't think that required a discussion and then a future vote. So it's matters like that, that I think if you look, you'll find more often than not. But I accept your point that every once in a while, there might be something that some, some members of the community care deeply about, but the board thinks is routine business. And so we need to be careful about that.
Yeah, I mean, my concern here is, is not on a, I mean, as you set the agenda, if you think that this does have the potential of being deemed an insignificant event, I think then it should be, there should be something on the agenda that says, I don't put an asterisk, that says this might be something to be voted on. I mean, my concern is this, there's an, there's an empathy in regards to attendance in public meetings, whether it's the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, and it could be the courtesy of Fair TV has allowed everyone to stay at home and, and watch these proceedings instead of attending. The problem is, is that, and I've done it myself, I'll say, say, I've looked at the agenda, I will listen to what the discussion is and be prepared when it becomes a voting item, and I'm not prepared at ten o'clock at night to jump in my car and run over because I hear that it's now a voting item. So that's where my concern is. I mean, you're, by doing, just deeming something insignificant needs to be more properly vetted to the public. I mean, if we're trying to create this community outreach I keep hearing about, this is not really reaching that point. But thank you.
Anyone have any other comments on that? Seeing none? Thank you, Mrs. Miss. Yes.
I was just going to say that I think there's been one or two times where we did end up voting and that was because, had we not, it would have delayed us in getting paperwork to the state or something of that nature, which would have delayed by quite a while. I do agree that we should have the items and it should be a, a vote for the following, but sometimes there is the exception.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments from members of the public? Hello?
Ms. Flynn.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
I'm writing Suzanne Mesko.
Touche.
I'm Amy Mazoff and I'm 261 Robin Lane. And thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to this board tonight. I've come to a number of Board of Ed meetings and I think one of the things that is, from the inside where you are, is difficult to understand, is that, you know, seventy percent of this town doesn't have kids in the schools. And it doesn't mean that we don't believe that, that, you know, that education is among the most important things in this town. And it has everything to do with our property values, it has everything to do with, with, you know, our sense of, of, of this being a good town. Now, I've lived here since I was six. I'm not going to tell you how many years that is, but it's a lot. And my feeling is that, I feel left out, that there are, at times, there are notices about important things that affect not just people within the schools, but all of us. And it's not just about budgets, it's about roads, it's about traffic, it's about a lot of things, where I'd like to see an attempt by this board to consider just the way information is disseminated. There are a lot of areas on the Board of Ed website I can't get to on, that are, require a password, that sort of thing. So all I'm saying is, Mr. Dwyer spoke about one town and he's, he's right, and it is one town. And there's a lot of fear in this town right now and all over the state of Connecticut because of what's happening. And there's a lot of divisiveness that's come from that fear. And I would rather see us work problems out together and feel more as if we're part of a solution than, than as people who are separate because we do not have children in the school system. That's my comment. I don't know that it really requires an answer, but I'm speaking for those of us who don't have kids in the school system and who are very, very interested in education. I, I'm married to someone who's a professor at Fairfield U and I am very interested in education. So I'm going to leave you with that thought. I'm not expecting to get, to get an answer.
Well, I'm going to ask if any board members do have an answer. Mr. Law, and you're up if you wanted.
Happy to, thank you. Thank you for your comment. And I do agree, I think that it would be good that we had a standard protocol, not just for this board, but probably for the whole town, on how we properly notice meetings. Because there has been a difference in, in how different meetings have been noticed. The password, I think, that you're referring to is probably Infinite Campus.
Yeah.
So, you know, I too don't have access to Infinite Campus. So I find out some things through either this board or through parents who let me know that, that they go on that way. But if we were to have a central place and we know that every meeting could be noticed the next day, I just don't know that we're necessarily that consistent. So I think that's a good piece of advice. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Cannelli?
A few comments. First of all, I, regarding the seventy percent not having children in school, that's, I always want to remind people when they say that, and I'm sure you realize this, but just for anybody else who's listening, obviously, what that's not counting is all the, the number of young parents coming to town whose children have yet to be enrolled. So that I, I think the seventy percent is a little bit misleading. I think the numbers in terms of who has a vested as in in school or about to be in school, that the numbers are significantly different than that. Go ahead, this is, this is going to take.
With all due respect, those people don't have access to a lot of information either, until they do have a child in the school.
And, and to that point, a few things. One, in terms of the access to Infinite Campus, which the only thing that is on there that a member of the public who doesn't have a child in the school, there are messages that go out from the school to the school communities. There are grades, there's attendance. That's where the people on, in, access to Infinite Campus get their transportation information, which the police have advised us need to get, notice it's not published in newspapers anymore. We access that through Infinite Campus. So easy for me to say because I have access, but there's very little posted on Infinite Campus that is for the general public. It's meant for the specific school communities. And so actually, I would not want that opened up to the general, not because, Ms. Mazoff, because of people like you, but there are other people in town. And I, and that, the, the information by and large communicated through Infinite Campus is meant for those parents in that school community. And I don't think that's something that the general public should have access to. That said, the website itself is quite comprehensive, but however, I do think that when the public has had difficulties finding certain things, that's invaluable for the Board of Central Office to hear about, because something that we think, well, that's on the website. Well, not all members of the public will realize, well, if I did the search through this or looked through this tab and that was really important and should be brought up to the homepage. You know, they're always adding links on the homepage, which I think are valuable. For example, when they had the EpiPen recall, there's a link right on the first page you go to on FairfieldSchools.org for information like that, which is very current. And, but on the topic of communication, first of all, we certainly do have a standard protocol for announcing our meetings. When we approve our calendar, when the chair produces the calendar in December, the superintendent secretary coordinates that through Town Hall. It's on the town website. All of those meetings are announced. The policy committee meetings are announced. If we have an ad hoc committee, all of that is on both the school and the town website because they reserve space and that's all noticed. So I'm not sure what that is in reference to. And as for attempting to distribute the information, I can't agree more with you that that's always an area where we're always looking for areas, how can we better reach people with that? The Fairfield Minute Man used to be far more widely spread. Now that paper's gone in a different direction. There is the citizen, there's online papers. You can't assume everybody is on social media, because again, people, people such as yourself who won't be getting Infinite Campus announcements and aren't getting those PTA emails, there are lots of areas of interest that might be of interest to you. And in terms of, if you have suggestions on how we can better put that out to the public, that would be free, of course. You know, we can't do mailings, you know, but if, if there are ways to do that, I mean, our agendas are posted, so the topics that are to come up are out there.
You're, and, and I respect what, what you're saying about, about, specifically about the boards, you know, the way that this board functions. But I'm talking, I think, about the school system in general. And I recognize that, that things are very different now than they used to be, in terms of, you know, safety and, and those, those concerns, there are big concerns for all of us. I have the sense that there's a schism, there is, there's a, there's this gap between people who don't have kids in the schools and the schools. And I understand some of the reasons why, and, and, you know, I could, I could list them off for you as well. But I'm not just talking about information coming out from the board. I'm talking about an exchange of information, of decisions that are made within the school system that affect everyone who lives in this town. Any dollar you take away from the town side and put into the school side is going to mean less services on the town side. That's an example. I'm not, I'm not going to make this about finances. I'm, I'm talking about in general, I grew up in this town. My mom worked in the school system. And I didn't, I didn't have the sense that there was them and us. And now I do have that sense. And that's a general sense I've heard from an awful lot of people. And I'm bringing, I'm putting it out there on the table because I'm going to ask you as people who are, I don't want to use the word control, but I can't think of a better word, who are, you know.
In a position?
In a position to, to make changes to, to policies, that there be more inclusion of some kind. I really feel that that's necessary. I mean, I look at, Parks and Rec's just put out its, its flyer for the year about the programs they have. There's a couple of things for, for adults or older adults. About ninety percent of it is, is for kids in this town. And you have to understand that there's a mounting pressure about, that, that, that there's being, there's a large group of people who are being ignored. And I'm just asking you to, to percolate that for a while and see if there's another way that there can be more inclusion, because we are one town and quite honestly, if you want to talk about finances, I have to reach in my pocket, whenever, you know, this board makes a decision, I have to reach in my pocket. So I'm just asking you to take into account that there are ways to include people, that there isn't a sense of, of division. There could be volunteer programs in the school system that, there are a lot of adults in this town who are very talented and, and who would be willing to help out there. Those kinds of things. All I'm saying is, it does seem like that there is a great wall and, and it's not a healthy thing for this town.
Thank you. And I will take comments. I'm going to go to Mrs. Pitco and then I'll go, Mr. Law.
I've lived in this town for thirty-one years and no, I'm not going to tell you when I moved here.
Fifty-four, so I got you.
I've owned a home here for over five years and when I decided to get involved and I got elected to the board, I started going to Board of Selectmen meetings and Board of Finance meetings and RTC meetings and RTM meetings. And that's how I got to know Mr. Flynn. And so I see the issues past just the Board of Ed, because we talk about all the other interests in the town. And I hear you loud and clear, I think the other boards maybe need to hear you too, because if you, I, I'm not completely against, like, having volunteers to come in for the sake of helping students with extracurricular stuff, I think, but you're talking more just beyond the Board of Ed. I think there's multiple layers to what you're saying here. I think you're saying that every decision we make, we have to be cognizant that we're talking about the entire town when it comes to taxpayers.
Thank you, that's, and, and like I said, it's not just about finances. It's about having a sense of being separate and apart from.
And preserving our town.
Yes.
I just want to know that I hear you and that, you know, I don't just take the Board of Ed as the only decision I ever make. I try to involve myself in everything in the town.
Mr. Law.
I was going to make a comment about information that's disseminated versus information that you have to go out and actively seek. And I think for the dissemination of information, you know, Town of Fairfield, we get these, these blasts to our emails, so Town of Fairfield news and announcements that come out. We could consider adding Board of Education meetings and such to these, because I believe these probably go to a wider base than those of Infinite Campus. I don't think that you were asking for access to Infinite Campus. I think you were saying that is a means of disseminating information that does not exist for the general public. It exists only for the school-based folks. So, something like getting involved in, you know, the Town of Fairfield News and Announcements that go out, that the general public can sign up for. I think that's what you're, one of the things that might help you.
And us.
All right. We'll go to Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, well, I mean, I followed Board of Ed issues a long time before I got on the board. And I'll say, the Board of Ed website was pretty awful when we first started. There was no Fair TV. And you really had to come to a meeting to know what was going on. And I think that that's definitely changed. The website has become much better. And you can go on the website to a specific school's page and get a tremendous amount of information about what's going on at that school. I mean, they have daily calendars at the high schools saying what's going on with concerts and sporting events. You can get the link to the PTAs to see what's going on at the PTAs. I mean, very few, yes, you can.
No, I can't.
Well, I--
I don't have a password to get into it.
But you don't need a password. The only thing you need to get a password to for PTAs is to find out who the membership is or who the chairs of the committees are. If you want to get information, I know that because I'm only a member of one PTA in this town right now. And I have gone to other PTA websites to get information about things going on at some of the other schools. And I've been able to find it. I haven't been able to get the information. I know you think it's funny, but I have been able to get the information. And I don't have passwords. I have passwords to one PTA, and that is my child's PTA. And I have access to information. And I'm sure if you had trouble reaching some information about a PTA, you could reach out to that school and request the specific information.
I guess that doesn't really address the idea of the separation between people with kids in school and people who don't have kids in school.
But I'm not quite sure how we're supposed to bridge that gap, so that people can get access to the PTA websites.
I'm not just talking about access via websites. I think I'm talking in general, consideration of my growing understanding of what the issues are for parents now, which are different than they were when I was in school, for example. And also, something about the issues for people who don't have kids in the schools and what affect decisions that you make have. And that's, okay, that's as far as I want to go. I'd like to be dismissed. Thank you.
No, just sit there. You have to wait until the bell rings. All right. Any other comments on that topic? Seeing none. Next member of the public is up. Hello, Ms. Marmeen.
Hi, good evening. Sheila Marmeen, 214 Fairfield Woodsboro. I have a question. I'm curious. We've talked about a lot of issues tonight. And I'd like to hear from every member of the board, if possible, on what are your priorities? What do you want to accomplish in the next six months or so? In an ideal world, what would you address? What's your priority? And how would you go about approaching that?
Let's see if we can be succinct on this, because this could, well, this could really take the next hour. So, let's go, we'll start with Mrs. Cannelli.
I think that's a great question. And for myself, I'd like to see the children in this town get as much education as they can and do it in a fiscally responsible way without trying to cut class, cut expenses for certain programs that we've worked so hard to bring back.
Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I think unfortunately, a lot of what happens in the next six months is kind of going to be determined by what happens with the budget. Because depending on where we end up in the budget, you know, in terms of numbers, we may be spending at least the next three months trying to figure out where we're going to try to find savings that will have the least amount of impact on students and staff. If for some miracle occurs and we don't have to cover those issues, I would say, looking forward, you know, first of all, you know, we have our relatively new superintendent here. So, you know, I look forward to seeing where she wants to take the district in the coming school year. You know, we need to revisit the district improvement plan at some point to kind of see where we are, take stock, maybe see if we need to, you know, change the order of different items that we're going to be moving towards or not. We do have some curriculum that are going to be coming up. I mean, that's longer than six months from now. But, you know, obviously, that's going to play a pretty important role in how things move forward in the district. So, that's not a totally clear answer, but--
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. We'll go to Mr. Dwyer.
Absolutely. Budget is number one. If I were to say for me, number two, as I've gone to meetings, I have appealed to citizens to express an interest in running for the Board of Education. The only way good education happens is because of good decisions at a Board of Education. We have five seats, the vacant one plus four others, up for election this year. We have the potential of hiring a new superintendent and only having four board members who hired her still on the board. We need to, sorry to scare you that way. And so, we need five good Democrats, five good Republicans, and five good unaffiliated. And the unaffiliated have to say, "I want to serve on the Board of Ed, but I'm not going to get elected as an independent. Choose a party. I don't care which party. Choose a party so that you can run for the Board of Education and help us make the best decisions possible." Budget first. In this November, we have an important election.
Mrs. Pitkow.
I'm committed to the district improvement plan, but I'm very realistic, just like Mrs. Gerber said, about obviously trying to preserve the lean budget that Dr. Jones and her staff put forward. So, my priority in the next six months is to try to figure that out. And I'm sure I'll be spending the summer trying to help some Republicans campaign.
Mrs. Cannelli.
As soon as you'd asked the question, I wrote down district improvement plan. You know, given finances, given new leadership, given that we are now, we will be halfway through it, what aspects of it are meaningful and what aren't? I mean, we are here to drive the education for our children. And budget factors into that. School population factors into that. The personnel before us factor into that. Finding more efficiencies, all factor into what is the service we're providing for our children. And the moment we lose focus on that, we're adrift. And that's where money can get wasted. Time gets wasted. Resources get wasted. Staff are wasted. And I think this has been a tough year in many ways. Again, obviously, a new superintendent coming in in December, staff being changed, the budget issue being what it is. And it's important that we deal with it and do it comprehensively and thoroughly and thoughtfully. But sometimes it does feel like I want to talk about the kids more. I want to talk about what we're doing. What are we improving? What are we cutting loose? What are we saying? This doesn't serve our purposes anymore. And however, we need to structure ourselves as a board, you know, with committees or with whole board discussions, or whatever we need to do to renew that focus, I think is really important.
Thank you, Mrs. Cannelli. Mr. Llewellyn.
I think over the next six months, I'd actually like to see the district move to an even greater partnership with the parents. I think that the parents are an instrumental part in each of their children's learning. I think that in the past, we've drifted away from that. And I hope we're moving back toward that partnership with the parents being able to get more involved in the schools, more involved in the learning. And I think that will help us. I think that when the parents can take a more active role in the education of their children, they have a better pulse on what's going on. They know if their kids are achieving or not achieving at the rate they should be. And I think that that helps accelerate the learning.
Mrs. Marmeen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next member of the public, please.
Thank you.
Same name on the paper that you stayed publicly, please.
My name is Jason Hyde, 85 Tamar Court. And I'm just wondering, I've been curious about demographics and the demographic changes. I've got two boys who are in Jennings. And you said no comments about personnel, but I think that you--
I didn't say that, but that is the rule.
Only if they're not wonderful, right?
Well, I will say, unfortunately, if we start accepting good comments, we also--
That would last a long time, too.
--by the Constitution have to accept bad comments.
Fair enough.
So, we do have to be careful.
Fair enough. So, I guess my curiosity is, if we've got a budget shortfall for education, and you had said that this is going to be perpetuated over the course of the next few years, but the millennial generation is heading out of high school now, a very large generation. And so, no matter what, it's not our town, it's just the population of the country, that that particular age group is going down. And so, we have, as the social studies teacher mentioned earlier, lower enrollment in schools. So, we've got the Board of Finance and the Board of Education here. So, if we've got a budget shortfall and ultimately, we've got lower enrollment, because there are just fewer kids that are that age, isn't that a good thing? Ultimately, doesn't our lower enrollment help our budget shortfall? Because we'll have fewer kids that we need to educate.
I'm going to go to Mrs. Gerber. I guess we'd go on to Mrs. Cannelli, the first one.
I'm not quite sure. I mean, at this stage in the game, it's hard to say exactly how far down the enrollment's going to go, that it would really provide such enormous savings. I mean, yes, of course, in time, if enrollments go down, I mean, it happened in the past in this town. We closed a number of our elementary schools in the 80s and a high school, and then immediately had to start putting portables on all over the place, because the enrollment went back up again. So, you have to be careful on how closely you cut it when the enrollment starts to go down, because it goes up and down. So, I'm not really sure if it would necessarily brings the enormous savings that you think it's going to bring. Although that said, of course, yes, as Mrs. Maxine Cannelli mentioned earlier, if you do close a school, that will obviously save considerable money, millions of dollars. But at the same time, you do want to keep in mind, and not to say that I would never advocate for closing a school if our enrollment was completely bottoming out, but you do have to recall that in the past, when we did that, when we closed too many schools and sold some of them off, we ended up having to pay a tremendous amount of money to open them back up again and get them back up to speed. And some of our schools, we didn't maintain as well. So, we had to, you know, in one case, we had to tear a school down and rebuild it. So, it's a really tricky balancing act. And I know it seems like, oh, well, you know, we'd be able to find all these great savings. And not to say that we couldn't find some, but I don't think necessarily as much as we would like, perhaps. So--
Anyone else like to answer?
We have about 250 elementary school sections, classrooms. If our enrollment goes down 250 kids, one kid per classroom, that doesn't keep us from having to have that classroom and having to have that teacher. There are some school districts in this country who say, "When you move into town, we can't tell you what school your child's going to go to. It's the next available seat." This town has never done that. And so, we really are talking about classrooms, and we have to have sufficient decline in enrollment in a neighborhood, or we go down the path, back to the original discussion. Mr. Llewellyn is correct. This board is divided on that question. And we have to have debate on that question. There are also some districts in this country who say, "No, it's a normal thing that we do. Every three or four years, we redistrict. And we make no promises to parents that your kid's going to stay in, or that one kid will be in this elementary school and another kid in another elementary school." This town has only handled that when we've actually closed a school or opened a school. So, we've set some standards that we think are for the benefit of children, which then does cost us money, no doubt about it. And it's, and the last comment I'd make is that we had 10,000 students. We dipped below that this year. Currently, we also have 10,000 and some odd students. We will go down, but a decade from now, we'll be back up to 10,000 students. And Mrs. Gerber mentioned, we look at our 10-year enrollment projection to make decisions.
Okay.
But in reality, we say, "We've got this building for 30 years. And we can't be so short-sighted to close a building, because this town closed enough schools," as Mrs. Gerber said, "65 portables later, we accommodated the enrollment. We're down to--
Nine.
--nine or 10 portables. And our goal is to eliminate all of the portables." And so, all of those factors are taken into account when we try and figure out, "How do we save administrative and operational costs?"
Makes sense. Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Seeing none. Back to the public for any other comments? Please, come on up. Welcome. How are you?
League baseball.
Hey, a long time ago.
Hi. My name is Gary Larkin, and I live on 134 Wilson Street, Fairfield. I've been here for about 12 years. Put two kids through the system. Did really well. They're in college when I graduated. And my youngest is now a, believe it or not, going to be a junior next year. So, he actually asked me to come here. He said, "Dad, I want to know, are they going to close Ward or consolidate the two high schools?" Because that's the rumor. Anyway, rumors go on these schools. They're talking. And I looked up online. The only I could find is there was, I guess, something at one of the board meetings here, the hearing, where that was some of the community input or something like that. That might be one idea that they could be talking about. So, the question I have is, if that were to happen, would it happen in the next two years, three years, four years? And I kind of get in the gist of what's, you know, the math that is involved with that. So, that's it. I just have a question.
We'll go to Mr. Dwyer with this one.
I think two members of the community raised that question. Unless some board member wants to correct me. I don't think a single one of our board members have said, "Yeah, let's go down to one high school." You can go home and tell your son with a straight face, "Yes, Ward is closing at the end of the week," just to see the reaction on his face.
Oh, yeah. That would be beautiful.
So, no. And 3,000 students roughly in one campus, neither campus could handle 3,000 students.
Yeah.
So, personally, I don't see it happening. It took how many years for this town to decide to go back to two after being down to one? I can't imagine the town debate that would incur. So, your son's going to be, you know, he's a junior.
Well, he will be a junior. He's a sophomore.
He'll be out of college, I think, without worrying about that.
I kind of figured, knowing what the traffic is, just when I had to pass by Ludlow to get to the train station sometimes in the morning, I couldn't imagine, you know, adding all those Ward students if, you know, we were going to Ludlow instead of Ward. But, yeah, it'd be kind of crazy.
Does anyone, this is a broader topic, so does anybody want to comment?
I can't remember what meeting it was brought up. And we were talking about students who go to the magnet schools, like the aquaculture school in Fairchild Wheeler. If all of those students came back, where would we put them if we had one high school?
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from board members on this? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Larkin.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Tell your son I said hi. All right. Anybody else? Any other members of the public, please? Please, sir. Welcome.
I couldn't resist. My name's Fred Stokely. We have two grandchildren, moving in from Brooklyn in June, who will be attending the Fairfield Schools. And that's why we're interested. I'm a retired school superintendent. And I see first student buses rolling around, so I assume you subcontract out. What about maintenance and custodial? Is that subcontracted?
There are certain, especially grounds services, that are subcontracted. And certainly, we have preventative maintenance contracts on our mechanical equipment and whatnot. But the main services of custodial and repair to the schools are done by our staff.
It's a tough decision. And we made it, when I was superintendent, in Ridgewood, New Jersey. We brought in Marriott Corporation. And we saved substantially in terms of budget and improved services considerably. I throw that out simply to share, it's an idea you may want to think about it. Marriott's no longer in the business, but there are other companies that I'm sure you can look at. And the other issue was redistricting. I've been through that in several districts. And needless to say, it's painful. Don't close one school. That was one of the lessons I've learned. When I arrived in Ridgewood, they had closed an elementary school. And I was there 15 years, and I never got over it. When I was in Waltham, Massachusetts, we closed six elementary schools and renovated 10 at the same time. So, you spread the pain if you're going to go through that process. And the vote didn't go to the community, it went to the city council. And we had the overwhelming support of the city council by an eight-to-seven vote to redistrict. So, I share that with you also. It's not easy. So, I thank you for your services and thank you for listening.
If I could, what was the cost when you closed six and renovated 10?
Well, it was called a mayor's plan. That was-- That was...
Kind of like the finance board chair.
And we used the mayor's architect. It was almost a washout. We saved by closing. A lot of real estate was available, but we used that money to renovate the 10 remaining schools. It was pretty much a wash, you know?
Sure.
Just briefly, first of all, wonderful that you're going to be re-engaging in the community. I'm from just a little bit north of you, up 128, so no Waltham well. So sorry that movie theater closed in that town, but, you know, just welcome. You know, it's wonderful to see. You've got to have such a different perspective, and feel free to use our emails.
Sure. That movie theater is now a school in Waltham.
It's now a school to become the movie theater.
Point of personal privilege on this, Mr. Chairman. My wife was born in Ridgewood, New Jersey, so...
It's a great place.
It is very nice. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none? We're going once, we're going twice, we're going three times, and I'm going to turn it over to board members if they have any closing statements.
So first, I'll say thank you for coming out. I know it was a kind of a rainy night to come out, so I very much appreciate both your being here and the questions that you asked. We normally end this session with individual board members. If they want to make a comment collectively on the various questions asked, we give them an opportunity to do that. I think I'll start with Mr. Llewellyn to give you a chance to catch your breath just as you sit down, Mrs. Lou McCormick. Mr. Llewellyn, do you have any comments you want to make?
Not particularly. I want to thank everyone for coming out, and I do think, you know, this board and future boards have a lot of, you know, hard decisions to make ahead of them, and hopefully we can keep the community input up and have kind of open, frank discussions over tough topics.
Just really, I mean, we're a board of nine with very, very different perspectives and backgrounds, and we're in a town that have, okay, do the math quickly, 59,991 other perspectives, and that includes the children. They can come up with some great ideas, just throw it at them like an Odyssey of the Mind problem and say, "Fix it." But, you know, your input is so valuable, not just at moments like this, but please use our email. I don't... I can't... I'll speak for myself. I don't always get back very quickly, but I always read them. And we are going to be looking at some tough decisions ahead, needing to be creative, needing to not just be resorting to the status quo and just doing it the way we've always done it. That's... It doesn't work for education. Why can we think it would work for a Board of Education and a district? And we just, I think all of us would welcome the input and the ideas. We only want to do it better. And we're only nine, and, you know, I'd love to hear more from people.
I want to thank everybody for coming out and watching, and I've been on this board for about a year and a half now, and I've already gone through hiring a superintendent and a really tough second budget season. I want to just thank the town bodies for working with us, and once again, thank you all.
The United States of America is a strong country because of a public school system, because of an educated public. 100% of the people that live in this country benefit from a strong public education system. That's the same thing that is true in Fairfield. And so I think you'll find that members of a Board of Education are clearly advocates for, in our case, 10,000 students. We take into consideration issues that are surrounding the town, but if we don't speak up for the 10,000 students, who will? And so I unabashedly speak up on behalf of those students to get them as many resources and as much of a quality education as possible because I think the town benefits economically. Two kids through school, $15,000 a year, 30,000 times 13 years, forget the inflation rate and all that stuff, time value of money, $400,000. Take away the money I pay to the town for the town services, maybe they get $8,000 a year from me. I'm in debt to the town for 50 years before I've paid for my kids' education. That is my perspective on how the public ought to be supporting public education. Thank you.
Well, thank you to everyone who came out, and thank you to Mr. Flynn for moderating, and thank you to your body and the other town bodies as well for getting through. I know we still have the RTM to get through, but it's been a really difficult budget season, and I do think that we've all realized that we have to try to work together in the best way possible to try to deal with the issues that are coming at us from the state. And thank you to the state representatives and state senators as well, who've really done a very good job of, you know, giving us as much information as they possibly have, although it changes from day to day. I've lived here for 20 years. I was here for seven years before I had a single child in the school system. Since then, I've had at least one child in the school system since 2003, and I still have three years to go. And then after that, I have every intention of staying here for as long as I possibly can, and I will continue to support the schools. I supported them before I came through my taxes and through moving here and wanting to stay here once I had children because I knew that the school system is strong, then volunteering through the PTAs, and then joining the Board of Education. And it's a very difficult job, and yes, we have very differing views on things. And but I think we also always need to try to do as much outreach as possible, and it's a work in progress, and there's always more that can be done. But we also need people to reach out to us as well and, you know, through email or phone calls or stopping us in Stop &amp; Shop or, you know, wherever, and share your opinions and share your thoughts and bring friends to meetings. I mean, all of you are here. I'm kind of preaching to the choir here, but, you know, get other people to come to meetings and get involved and get people with younger children or children who aren't in school who will be coming to school in a while. I mean, we really need to have as wide-ranging and vibrant and diverse a community as we can, supporting our schools and learning about our schools. And so thank you for coming, and please continue to support the school system.
Thank you all for coming out on a night like this. It's great to see so many people here, and I know when I first started on the board, it used to be standing room only. It's been disappointing how many less people. I think technology doesn't allow people to watch it from home in their pajamas, but it's nice seeing people out there. And it is good to hear from the public because the public is bigger than the nine of us. So I think it's very helpful. And Mr. Flynn, tell your son you did a great job.
Because I kept my mouth shut.
And, you know, I think, hopefully you know how to vote when it's your turn.
Thank you.
I don't know how much I can add since I didn't get a chance to hear the comments, but I look forward to hearing them on Fair TV, and I think it's wonderful that you all took the time on this kind of miserable night to show up. And I do want to emphasize that, you know, we have a great school system, and we always want to push to make it better, and I think that's the whole point of it. So the more everyone gets involved and contributes, I think the better it just gets in general. So thanks again for coming out, and hopefully we can work through the difficult issues that are in front of us.
It is an official meeting, so one bin item, if you will. I need a motion for adjournment. Ms. Pitco, seconded by Ms. Carnell. All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you.